Mr. Galetti, Mr. Musgrove, Mr. Orlett, Ms. Schneider.
Here.
Alderman, Galetti, Randall, and Davidson are excused. The only department heads I asked to be here tonight, for sure, were Chief Clay and Bob Sable, and everybody else was excused. At this time, if you'd stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I want, first of all, to say thank you and give a brief explanation. We had to call this special city council meeting tonight because we were trying to get the Police and Fire Commission to meet earlier than their scheduled meeting last week, but they couldn't because of, there's only three other commissioners, and they were, one was out of town for 10 days, and that was a real clinker in getting them together. So, we couldn't get together before our regular city council meeting two weeks ago to officially act on these police officers that we needed to fill. And then the next dilemma is, the academy starts, the power test starts on Wednesday, day after tomorrow. So, that they could get in the academy, they have to be sworn in tomorrow, and so, that's the way, that's just the whole, the juggling was a little tighter than usual. So, in, I wanted to explain that, why we had to have the special meeting, because a couple people asked. This time, we will open public participation. If anyone would like to address the council this evening, please raise your hand, I'll recognize you. If not, I will close public participation. And, I just also want to address the group, most everyone here I see tonight has been here on numerous occasions, but you all know the emergency evacuation procedures. If we had to leave, we'll go downstairs for a storm, police officers and the chief and assistant chief will help us guide that way, and if we had to leave for fire, smoke, et cetera, leave the building, careful crossing the street, go out the front door, and meet by the county courthouse sign. I think that pretty well sums up that. So, moving into the regular part of the purpose of this meeting, which is very simple, I'm going to ask Alderman Silsby if he would consider making the following motion.
Your Honor, on behalf of the Finance Committee, I'd like to make a motion to hire the following three probationary police officers to replace the three police resignations as recommended by the Board of Police and Fire Commissioners. The police officers to be hired are Beau Barfield, Michael Borkowski, and Hezekiah Webb. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Silsby, second by Alderman Schmidt. Question, yes ma'am?
Before I say anything, let me state clearly, I am in favor of hiring additional police officers. I campaigned on that, I am not in any way objecting to that. What I am objecting to is the process. Last week, it was brought to my attention that there is a state law that requires police and fire commissions to be of multiple political parties. It is my understanding that, according to the city website, there are three individuals that you appointed to that board. I checked with the county clerk today, every one of them is of your political party. Therefore, I believe the actions taken by that board cannot stand.
Well, that board, nobody's ever raised that before.
We have a city attorney who is supposed to be familiar with state law. I am very upset that somebody from the community had to bring this to my attention when that is what we hire an attorney for, to make sure we are following the law.
Well, when I have appointed these people, Russell Scott's been here way before I became mayor, and helped us through the justice decree, and as an attorney, is very well-versed. The other ones were brought to this council for approval since you've all been here, and I'm, I don't know if you can comment without further research, or?
This is the first time that this has been raised to me. I note that the statute addresses the same political party existing in such municipality. If you have evidence that they're members of the same political party, I'd like to see that. I'm sorry?
I handed it to you.
Are you saying Democratic versus Republican party?
If you'll finish reading the statute, that is what it says, that you may certainly use that as an identifying marker.
That just shows they took a Democratic ballot in the primary, that doesn't mean they're necessarily of that party. Point of order.
Hold it.
She wasn't called on.
Okay, okay, I'm letting the attorney answer.
Yeah, this is, I mean, this is something that we're going to have to research. This is the first time this has been raised to me, no one's ever suggested what anybody's party affiliation was, but I'll certainly research it and get you an answer.
We don't necessarily recognize Democratic versus Republican.
The statute covers that. It also states that the members of the commission must file an affidavit declaring their party. I asked the clerk last week, I will ask that again, do you have on record any such affidavits from those members?
No. Alderman Schneider is next.
Yes, can I ask to be noted when the point of order was called? My thing is, I'm not against hiring the police officers, it's the process of where it was done. They resigned June 30th, July 9th, and July 24th. There was plenty of time, I'm quite sure all three weren't on vacation or gone the whole month of August, we're at the end of August. And our August 11th police and fire meeting was canceled due to no information. There was information, there was two already resigned. We should have been informed of this. And, my next thing is, on the list, one is number four, number seven, and the other one that's being, trying to be approved is number 10, which was a tie. When was the drawing held, and what is wrong, where is five and six, eight and nine? We have a right to know why we skipped these numbers. I won't use names, I'll use the rank number. There was nothing said, we should have had a meeting at our regular meeting instead of it being canceled. There was already information, two officers had resigned, and we should have been informed of it.
First of all-
Now, why did we skip the meeting?
First of all, you're speaking of the Police and Fire Committee.
Yes.
The Police and Fire Committee does not choose, it's the commission. The commissioners-
But it's supposed to come through us after it goes there. We're skipping the Police and Fire Committee. That's what we're there for.
If you, and earlier in the Finance meeting, I mentioned, for those of you who were here, Chief, do you want to address some of this so far, and I'll turn it to you, and I'll fill in the blanks.
Candidate one declined a position for Fairmont. Candidate two declined a position for Wood River. Candidate three declined a position for ISP. Candidate four was hired August 29th, we want to hire that person. Candidate five had unacceptable background. Candidate six, unacceptable background. Candidate seven, we choose, we want to hire that person. Candidate eight, unacceptable background. Candidate nine declined position for Fairview Heights. Candidate 10, on the tie, that person accepted, the other person declined for the St. Louis Police Department. That is where we are.
Okay, getting back to, you want me to answer your first question, Al?
Well, I want to put this in with it since he added that. I don't know if we'll have to go into executive session or not, but I want to know why so many with a good rank, good score, had unacceptable choice.
Well, when previous chief Roquita backgrounds them, and they bring the extensive background to the commissioners and to the police chief, and they review them, if the background is felt by that group that it's unacceptable, are, in some cases, the polygraph, right, Chief?
There could be for a number of reasons. There can be arrests, there can be drug use, and I'm not saying this about these people, I'm saying these are the types of things that come up that we can consider. We can look at their previous job history. They can have been turned down at other police agencies, or released from other police agencies. So, there are a multitude of things that we look at in determining whether or not somebody's background is acceptable or unacceptable. But once we make that decision, I present, those facts are presented to the commissioners, and they make a decision on that. We make a recommendation to them, they make a decision. And it has worked very well for us, and we don't lower the bar. There are some tough standards that we make people go through. It's not just that, sometimes it is a polygraph test that'll knock somebody out. So, there's a number of different things that can come into play while you're not acceptable for a background check. You could have a very extensive juvenile record, that's just, got a lot of history there. So, there's a lot of things we look at, and when we come up and we look at these things, we try to make an informed decision, but our goal has been, and we've been consistent, we're not lowering the hurdle. You have to get over that hurdle, and when you don't, I don't recommend you.
Does that answer your question?
Doesn't answer why we didn't have a committee meeting when we knew there was already two.
Well, I will answer that, that's what I started to say before. If we would be adding an 85th officer, I would have taken it to Police and Fire Committee before I went to Finance. But these positions, these 84 positions were in the budget. Some would say, why did we have to go to the Finance and Council, just replace them? But, as I explained in Finance a while ago, which I don't think you had an opportunity to be here that early, I have, since I've been mayor, and after what we experienced in 2009, when the state drastically cut our income tax formula with no warning, I have ever, well, I've actually done it before that, we've always still gotten permission from Finance and from the Council to go ahead and act to replace people on Police and Fire because they're very expensive salaries and packages of benefits. As you know, a police officer is approximately, what, $78,000 or something like that, Chief?
Yes.
So, we've made that commitment to make sure that we all agree that the money's still in place, even though at budget time, six months ago, we felt it was, but sometimes things change, you know, sales tax drops, state cuts funding, they hold money, so, that's why we took it. If we were creating a new position, I would say it would be appropriate to go to Police and Fire Committee because they ultimately help oversee policy, budget, grievances, et cetera, with the Police and Fire as the eighth alderman. But this one here was the original budget, it was reaffirming what we had, I felt it needed to go to Finance, and this is the way we've done it before. Alderman Hayden?
Yes, Your Honor. I've got some other things to say, but I just want to, you realize what you just said, the Police and Fire Committee oversees policy, grievances, that pertains to issues of personnel. And, I'm sitting here tonight, completely in the dark, in the fact that, you know, the public needs to understand that this is not three, as you said, three new positions. We're basically fulfilling where we're at, and I'm sitting here as an alderman, sitting here trying to think to myself, and first of all, by precedent, Your Honor, you're drastically wrong, you know, as you know, I served in the City Council from 93 to 97, I think if you go back and check then, and the minutes thereafter, I don't recall ever, and even since I've been on the City Council since 2011, even if it's been to fulfill an existing vacancy, whether it be retirement, et cetera, it's gone before the Police and Fire Committee, then it's gone to the Finance Committee, then it's gone to the City Council. But now, what, so again, we had this discussion a while back with streets and grades and traffic, we got committees, we got protocol. So, I think my colleague, the Alderman Large, Ms. Schneider, is very appropriate in her questions, but again, Police and Fire Committee handles overview of policy. This City Council has the final decision, and I'm trying to figure out why we had three resignations, because I think that's highly unusual.
And, Ms.-
Well, I will address that again, as I have-
We did it in Finance, but I will, if you'd have been here earlier, you'd have heard-
I could not be here-
Okay, so, believe me, it's nothing hidden. Chief, would you explain?
No, there is not. Let me be clear about that, there is not. So, you know, if you're going to make those kind of implications, you have something to back that up, sir.
I'm not making those implications.
Well, you, yes you are.
I'm trying to be informed of what's going on.
Let me be straight up and clear with you on that. There is nothing about that. The first person that resigned was 6/30 of 2014. He is a military officer. He resigned to take a full-time job with the military. He has been gone from our department 6/6 June of 2012, 6 June of 2012. It is coincidence that he chose to resign on the 30th of June. Let's take the next guy. That guy was an officer and been with our department for quite some time. He is from Washington State, that is his home state. He has been trying to get back there since last year. He finally got a job, and he returned there. He resigned on the 9th of July. Let's take the next guy. That guy resigned for his personal reasons on the 24th of July. So, there was three resignations in 24 days. There was no conspiracy, no secret, no anything.
I never said that, Mr. Chief.
Well, sir, I'm just going, that's the way I felt, that's the way that I felt.
Alderman Hayden, let the chief finish.
That's the way you delivered that, to me. And anyway, after that, after that, we then had to try to fill those positions. I attempted to have a special meeting of the Police and Fire Commissioners so that I could take this before the City Council on your regular meeting. I could not get this done during that period of time that those three had left, because there were psychologicals to be done in there, there were polygraphs to be done. I just can't order those up, we have to schedule for that. There was drug testing that had to be done. It could not all be done in that window. That is what that was, and that is why we're here today, nothing more.
And maybe you also didn't hear, Alderman Hayden, but the academy starts, the power test starts Wednesday. So, the chief was trying to get those, because they only hold academy usually twice a year?
Right, the next one is, I believe, in January. So, what we were trying to do is get everybody done and available so that they could attend.
This was not-
That's what it was.
This was not a conspiracy, a shift, this was simply trying to-
Your Honor, I never said, I never used the word conspiracy.
You were very bold in your questioning and figuring-
No, I'm not being bold, Your Honor, we had to take an evening out to be here tonight over three resignations, and Ms. Schneider brought up the question of why has it been so long, and there was no offense directed at you, Chief, the question is legitimate of why, if we had resignations in June and July, that it didn't go before the appropriate committee, and all of a sudden, we're just hearing about it this evening, I think that's a fair question.
Until Thursday afternoon, we had nothing to take to a committee, and to the commissioners, when they were going through, it took extensive time for Chief, retired Chief Roquita to do the backgrounds, and until he found out where he was at, after, as you reported earlier, some of these people declined the positions, so they had backgrounds worked up on a couple of them?
We had some gentlemen that we had had, that we had the background done, we actually had done a polygraph. We were set to start to get this person presented, and he turned around and backed out of that, in the process. That occurred, he went to Wood River, that's a fact. Now, he's leaving Wood River to go to Madison County Sheriff's Department, the same person. All of that happened in that timeframe. There, I don't have anything to, I'm not pulling anything, and I, maybe he didn't say that or not, I'm not pulling anything.
Nobody said you were-
This is just simply me trying to get these officers hired so we can be at our staffing levels, and this was the way to do that. That is all this was. I tried to make this work, I talked with you, Mayor, about it, trying to get this worked around so we could get these people, or I told you we'd be doing it in January.
Yep.
That's what we have to do.
And I understand, and I appreciate that, because I certainly support making sure that we have a full budgeted officers, that we have budgeted, but again, you, this should have been brought before the Police and Fire Committee.
The timing of it, even if we would have been recommended to do so, the timing of it was, we didn't have this list until Thursday.
You, we didn't have, we had, we had-
Police and Fire Commission did not give us three names until Thursday.
We had, we had some names, but we did not have the information as far as if they had passed their background, if they had passed their polygraph and so forth. We didn't have, and had never presented this to the commissioners before that. Yes, we normally do come to you guys, I don't have a problem with that, and say, here's the people, and I tell you, they got good polygraphs, they got the academy, they did this, they did that, and then we go forward, that has happened. It did not lend itself to this for a number of reasons.
When, Your Honor, when it comes to our police department, which is very important to me, and the things that I've fought for, I state for the record, as an alderman, that when we're serving to protect and serve, that our goal is to serve and protect the community, at a minimum, we, as elected officials, have a right to know what's going on, and all we needed was a simple thing, when the first one said, we're down one, we're down two, that's all I want, is communication, both to you and the mayor and the chief, and I don't think asking for that type of communication is asking for much, Chief and Mayor, because I feel I have a right to know what's going on in the community and the people I represent.
Let me get this straight, were you telling me that is the only, the mistake you see here is, I did not send out an email to the Council telling them that we're short one person? Is that what you're telling me? This was something that happened over a 24-day period, we, everybody was struggling, trying and scrambling, trying to get this done, to have a package of names to submit to you folks for your approval? I don't think like that, where I'm trying to fix, where I'm trying to insult you because I didn't call or send an email. I cannot function like that, there's a lot of things that have to be done.
And this man's got two secretaries to support him to communicate to us, and it's his job to keep this council informed, not you, him.
Excuse me, I've had my hand up, I'm your one-
And that's why we got committees.
Are you done, Mr. Hayden?
For now.
Alderman Schneider?
Yes. How this all got started, I'll put it to the question I'm asking. We could have had our meeting, it did not have to be canceled because it said there was nothing to discuss. We could have met at our normal time, it's always on the schedule, it's that way out of the 12 months of the year, we could have been informed, we're down these many officers, we're working on it, we will keep you informed. But the meeting was canceled and said there was nothing to discuss, so I took it that there was nothing going on. And, we get into this thing that, oh, we got emails, we got computers, we got telephone, cell phones, but it seems the city doesn't do anything with that unless it's on their agenda. And as at one time, I asked about meetings, and I was told, which I have the copy of the email, to go to the website and get the information myself. That's wrong, that's another point. But the point now is, we had an August 11th meeting that was canceled because there was nothing. It's like it's a one-man show that we're not allowed to know anything of what's going on, and that is what's, I'm, I don't know what, Mr. Hayden may be picking up on my questioning too, but my questioning is, we could have at least got an email, that we were going to be, having to have a special meeting, we're working at it diligently, we weren't even informed about it till now. How many has a copy of the names, the date, and the reason why? I had to ask for that. We should have been informed, this could have came as an email. I'm not against hiring the police officers, for God's sake, we're down three. And when you make a call sometimes, and I've had the problem, I don't get the response I should have gotten, and I've left it fly, but this is what is wrong.
Well, let me-
We were not informed, and that's what this, that committee is for. The committee is for us to make the decisions too. It should have went down the line, from the commission to the committee meeting, to Finance, and then to Council. If you would have had to have three meetings right away, we could have filled in the names and said Officer A, Officer B, Officer C, as soon as we get this, we will need to come back for the approval, but we want you to know, we're working on it. We have a right to know. That's what the citizens elect us for, is to know what's going on, because they don't, and if we don't, it makes us look like a fool.
Let me, let me say this.
You think it's funny?
Okay, hold it.
No, she's the one laughing.
Okay, both of you, okay?
Well, you didn't do point of order, she did.
Well, point of order to both of you!
Well, you should have done it to her first.
This is a little ridiculous, but let me say this, when the meeting was canceled, the Police and Fire Committee meeting, I didn't cancel that meeting, the police chief and the fire chief consulted and contacted my office and said, we don't have any business. At that time, on the, what was the date, the 11th of?
The 11th, we've already had two resign.
Okay, but, but here's the deal, at that time, at that time, they didn't have any names to bring forward. Okay, you heard the chief. From now on, if he'll, and he usually tells me at some point, sometimes it's in passing, I don't know that he gives me an email each time somebody, usually reports to me, but I will send out an email if somebody resigns or whatever happens, okay? But, but understand, nothing was done wrong here. They decided to cancel the Police and Fire Committee meeting, and I yielded to their professional knowledge of what needed to be on that agenda. I didn't set that agenda, they usually run it by me in case something else has come up that one of you bring up that I need to add. At that time, I didn't know where they were at. At that time, I didn't know that the SWIC, the Law Enforcement Academy, I didn't know it starts this Wednesday with the power test. I didn't have that date memorized. He, okay, he apologized tonight and said, we'll try to correct that. But folks, there was nothing done intentional far as canceling that meeting, other than we had no action that night to take.
But we could have been informed. For the record, I want it stated that we were not informed that three people had already resigned, knowing that we were going to have to replace them.
I have never, to this level of oversight, ever dealt with a council that would want this much information. I guess I'm still learning. I have not had any of you ever come to me before, asking me how far down I am on numbers and so forth, that has never come up. If that is something that you want as a council, then that is fine, but you have to, you're going to have to tell these things to me. You know, that is not something that I can just garner, sit and think that that's what you're wanting. I, you know, I just didn't pull that out of my head, and you know what, again, so I apologize if I did not tell you guys that I was down, and I'm not being flippant, I simply don't think that way, that that is something that you guys are looking to have from me. But we can certainly do that if you want to know how many numbers, where we are, at any given time. We can make that happen.
Alderman Hayden?
Again, Chief, I accept your apology, I'm still amazed at your action to me, asking what is going on, and getting that defensive, when obviously, when I've been pushing and pushing and pushing to add more police, because I believe that that is going to be the salvation of this city, and that is what is hurting this city, and trying to add more police so that the loss of certainly three in a sharp period of time is very much a concern to me. I have no idea, Mrs. Schneider, what papers you're talking about, I've not got nothing in regards to that.
If I may respond, I asked, I called and asked, and an email was sent, I wanted to know why and the dates that these three officers resigned, because I hadn't heard anything about it, and being on the committee, I should have been informed.
And you got that from Chief Clay?
This came from Chief Clay, and from Russell K. Scott. What came from Chief Clay's secretary is, Alderman Schneider, below are the answers to your questions.
And what was that date?
Number one, number two, number three, names, date resigned, date resigned, date resigned, resigned to, resigned to, resigned far. Thank you, Lyndon Bohannon, Administrative Secretary. We all should have been given this, I should not have had to ask for it.
But what was the date of that transaction?
Friday, August 27.
Okay, well, I will be honest with you, I don't know that I saw that.
Well, oh.
You called and asked for something, it doesn't mean he's going to respond to every alderman.
That notion that I should be able, I cannot read your minds, I cannot do that. You guys, if you're changing how these things are done, this is not something that I faced before in the past with you, or with this council. If you want things differently, or if you're requesting other things, you do have to ask. You do, you do need to share that with me. You do need to say, Chief, we would like to have this information in the future, and I will provide that information to you. But that is not something where you can leave it to me to figure out what it is you may need or want, and then come back and criticize because you say that's something that you wanted and I should have provided that. Tell me what it is that you want, when you want it, and if I am able to provide that information, I will provide it. But I should not have to guess at that, this works two ways.
Okay, since I was talking and he was answering-
I'll recognize you.
I would hope so, thank you. This is why we have the committee meetings, we could bring the questions- We could bring the questions up, what's going on. That would give you a chance, or the fire chief, the chance to explain what's going on. When we have these meetings, that's what we're getting paid for, is to be at 'em. If we go there and nothing is said, both you or the fire chief say, "We have nothing to discuss, there's no information going on," fine. At least we showed up, we did our job. The reason, that is the reason we are on these committee meetings. I mean, all we would have had to done was come in, you could have addressed us and said, "We have three that's resigned, I'm working on it, it's going to have to be done," and get the people into the academy as soon as it started. We are just as much part of receiving information, what goes on in this city, as the department heads or anybody else. We should be informed. I'm not saying you gotta go put a letter in the newspaper, but we should be informed, and that's why we have these meetings. They're scheduled, one a month. If nothing else, we could come and say, "Okay, how is things working? What are things going?" This is what we're here for, is to know what the city is doing.
Alderman Consilla.
I have no problem with a committee being canceled because staff does not have all the information they want to present to the committee. I have no problem with that. You may, but I just want to make it known that not everybody agrees with you. Also, I think you're offended. I think you are actually hurt personally because we didn't contact you on this. That's, that's how I feel, that you're getting a little off-base here. Also, I think sometimes people want to micromanage. It's not important that we know why these people resigned. That's not necessarily our job. It's our job to hire good people. And I think when you want to get into all that business, you want to be a manager, and that's not our job. That is up to the department heads. I think some of us are micromanaging, and we need to keep our noses where they belong. We make policy, we enforce policy, but we don't get into the daily operations that are up to the department heads.
Alderman Schmidt.
I would just like to state that I agree with Alderman Consilla, that I think the police chief is doing a fine job, and I don't think it's our job to micromanage or to second-guess everything that's going on in the police department or any other city department.
And I think you all know, Chief Clay has provided all of us an enormous amount of information many times, more than, at times, more than what I thought he needed to at times. He's provided you enormous amounts of data about things. So I'm sorry if this one particular instance here, but, but you know what? This was some unique circumstances, and if we don't vote on it tonight, we will have 81 officers until January because we cannot get them in the academy. There's no substitution for showing up late there.
Your Honor, we're gonna vote on it, and I expect it to pass unanimously. So did, last Monday's meeting, were you aware that there could be a possible meeting tonight?
I don't know when I became aware of it. I guess, I guess it wasn't until we got ahold of Russell Scott, 48, well, the meeting was scheduled, the regular scheduled meeting was for Thursday, right?
August the 21st.
That was the regular scheduled meeting, but he was out of town. And until the chief talked to Rokita and Russell Scott, that they thought they actually had three candidates or a couple ready to go, I didn't know for sure, because that's why I didn't call for a special meeting sooner, because we didn't have, we didn't have any affirmation from the Police and Fire Commission.
What the, the, in all due respect to my colleagues from Ward 1 and 2, again, it's not micromanaging when we're just asking for communication, and that's simply what we're asking for. And again, Chief, I understand where you're coming from, but over the last, you know, up till about 2009, you know, basically, you had 16 aldermen from the good government party. But since 2009, and to the present, the public's decided that they want a little mix of representation, so there are different ways and thinkings that are going on here. And again, I accept your acknowledgement that in the future we'll be informed. Again, it's not micromanaging, Your Honor, it's just being informed, especially when we are down with our police force that serves and protects the public. Has the city attorney had a chance to review the information submitted by Alderman Holt? And is there any substance to that?
This is gonna be a matter I have to research further. This is the first I've heard of it. I do note that the composition of the Police and Fire Commission is as it existed prior to the time I was appointed city attorney. I wouldn't have had any reason or occasion to look into this prior to that. I wouldn't be aware of what affidavits are filed with the clerk's office and what isn't. But based upon this information, it's something I'm gonna have to research.
Alderman Holt.
Mr. Attorney, is it not true that you are also a vice chair of the Democratic Party of St. Clair County? Are you telling me you were not aware that those three people are, in fact, all Democrats?
No, I'm telling you that the composition of the Police and Fire Commission is as it existed prior to my appointment. This has never been an issue raised to me. I'm not one that, that needs to go back and reevaluate things that were done prior to my tenure.
Okay, this is the second time I've heard out of this administration in a week. We've been doing it wrong, so we're gonna keep doing it wrong because it's tradition.
But, well, you know that's not what I said, but I, I won't attempt to put words-
But you are a professional city attorney. I expect you to understand the state statutes.
Well, and I expect to as well, and I certainly believe that I do, but this is not a matter that has been raised prior to now. If you wanted to contact me in advance of the meeting, it was something that, something that we could have looked into, but you chose to wait until the floor of the City Council meeting to raise it, so I'll need time to research it. I don't want to make a flippant opinion. Please allow me to finish. I don't want to make a flippant opinion. This is something that was just handed to me. I think it's, it's serious enough to look into, and I've already offered to do that. But again, I don't think it's a function that I have to go back and reevaluate all appointments that were made prior to my time. I haven't had occasion to search the city council, I'm sorry, the city clerk's office to determine what affidavits, if any, have been filed. You know, these are all things that I need time to look into.
Alderman Holt, you sat with us, we invited you up for a meeting just a week or so ago.
I didn't know about it at that time.
Okay, so that's my question. So at that time, you didn't, so you've learned of this, you've been on this council the whole time too. I'll be honest with you. I'm gonna have to yield to, our city attorney does his research, because I've never had that presented to me by anyone. I certainly haven't tucked it away and ignored it, and if you would have known it then, I would have hoped you'd have told us then instead of waiting till now. I mean, I've never heard it before. If it's true, we're gonna have to certainly make some adjustments, if that's the way it is. I don't know if we're home rule, but I will tell you, that's never been brought up in my 17 years in city government.
Okay, so the question is, now that it's out there, now that we understand, even though we don't completely have all of the answers, where do we go from here?
Well, I would think tonight, we're gonna have to move forward, and he'll have to get the research, and we'll have to come back and then see.
Can we call it a provisional decision based on further research? I understand the deadlines. I don't, I don't want to stop us or make us be short or have to wait until January.
Well, I can assure you this-
But I don't want us to knowingly commit any kind of illegal act.
Well, if that's the case, then everybody hired, if that's the case you're looking for, you know, you're raising the question tonight. I would hope that we would move forward, hire these officers, let Garrett do his research, because it may take a few opinions. But if we have to, if we have to, and make some adjustment, that adjustment can't be made right this minute, it's gonna take some time.
Okay, I have a second question specifically for you. We are not at full capacity tonight, but we do have a quorum, so you were satisfied to let this very issue go forward?
I thought it was important enough to fill these officers.
I don't disagree with you. My question though is, if you were going to have two of a three-member board available, that is a quorum-
We didn't have, at another nights, they tried. They couldn't get, they couldn't get even two together.
Okay, well, that's the answer then. That's what I can understand.
They struggled, they, every date that they proposed, they were having trouble, especially with the one of them being gone for the number of days he was gone.
Okay, thank you.
Okay? Alderman Hayden.
Just one final thing. Yeah, no, I won't support, I understand where Alderman Holt's coming from, but I won't support any provisional motion tonight. We'd need to get the officers hired. But again, back to protocol, there should have been a special Police and Fire Committee meeting called before the Finance Committee meeting tonight, Your Honor. I beg you to go back and look at the record and show me how many times in the past that we've actually hired without going through those committees. I, I don't recall any except for tonight.
I don't know, I'd have to, you know, like I said, if we'd have been hiring a new position, I'd have probably called a joint meeting of the two tonight. And if that was my mistake, but I called a meeting of the finance to approve it first, because I felt that it's a budgetary thing that we were sustaining and keeping that was in the budget. Alderman Schneider.
Yes. Excuse me. I am far hiring the police officers to get our count back up to where they're supposed to be, but I want to say I'm very against the procedure the way it's done. My next question is to bring up what Alderman Holt presented. So does that mean, I guess the city attorney has to answer this, if what she has handed in is proper, right, or by law or ordinance, with us hiring these three officers tonight, does that violate that ordinance, which, or law, what she turned in that we're hiring these without it being in proper committee there?
You know, without having the opportunity to research it and render an opinion as to the composition of that board, I will tell you that anytime you have a governing board and someone is found to, to be disqualified, it doesn't render the action of a majority of that board duly constituted to be invalid.
So what the decision we-
So if one of your membership was, one of, one of the member of the council was determined to be disqualified, it doesn't invalidate an act of the majority of those qualified.
So we can, as Alderman Hayden said, this will, it will knowingly pass, because we do need to get these three officers, but as I've stated and stated, it's the procedure that was taken. I will be saying yes to hire these three. It's just my questioning of how they could skip some of the numbers, and Chief Clay answered some of them, but was there a drawing to see about the two?
No, the two tens, one had already went to St. Louis Police Department, no, St. Louis County Police, of the, of the, of the, in a tie.
And at some point, can we have for the aldermen that want to see why we rejected five, six, eight, and nine, for the ones that had unacceptable choices, or is that not available?
I, I have that. I have their backgrounds, and I would-
Well, I mean, I'm asking for the reason why you made the decision to say no to some of these, of their backgrounds, when at our previous city council meeting, we got a letter from you stating you approved this one solicitor, and he had a list mile long.
Yeah, I remember that. And that was done-
And this is what I'm saying. I think it's, I mean-
Let me just answer that. That was done because not just, when somebody has an arrest record and you see a series of arrests, those are not convictions.
But some of them are.
And then, he had a lot of traffic, and he, and I also looked at his history as far as how far it went back, how stale it was. And so I make those cold decisions on that recommendations to you, but you guys, you seemed, you went the way that you wanted to go on that. I didn't have a problem with that.
Because it came highly, we questioned it, and the mayor said, "Well, Chief Clay has recommended this."
Right.
And he had already stepped out of the room.
And again, I, I will recommend, you are not bound by that. I will make a recommendation, but mine's gonna be on, basically on what I see in the criminal history, how stale it is, what the seriousness is of the arrests, not just that they were arrests. You can have people with a series of arrests but no convictions, no convictions on there, and they haven't done an expungement to get their records cleaned up or did anything like that. So when you see that kind of stuff, or you see where, if I make a recommendation on that, it's gonna be because of those things. With respect to the background check, the background check is what is gonna make the determination for me is whether or not they go forward. There's gonna be some felonies. There are different things in their infamous things that they do that the statute speaks of, and if it's in there, or if there's a lot of extensive drug use, or if there's other things. People are very honest sometimes at their polygraphs. They come in and they tell all over themselves and believe that because they told us the truth and did all these wicked things, that that's gonna make us bless them. Well, we don't. So that happens. They tell us a lot of stuff. So when we have that, I don't have a problem with that. If you guys, as a group, at the Police and Fire Committee, you want to sit down, I don't necessarily want to throw their names out there to you, but I would be happy to give you a synopsis or a summary of why this person's not recommended.
You can use letters, numbers.
But, but, but again, I say to you guys, don't let bureaucracy start driving our behavior to the point that you wear me the hell down with so much that you're asking for, that I cannot possibly manage the department. I have to be able to do it. But if you want something from me, you certainly have to make it known to me. You cannot sit back there on your hands and think that I'm reading your mind. And one thing that you said, Alderman Hayden, is that the makeup of the committee was different. There was a different way that people went back and forth, and we, and we, and different relationships, and things have changed. I will tell you this, one person in here, Alderman Holt, if she wants to know something, she comes up to my office. She makes an appointment, she comes up there, she sits down, and we talk about it. She puts it right out there.
I have done, I'm not in your office, but I have sent emails.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying. So you, folks, I will make myself available to you, but you still have to share, you gotta work with me. You have to work with me. It's 16 of you in here, and I don't know what everybody wants, but I'm willing to help.
Okay, let me go back. Did we originally have a motion?
We have a motion in a second.
Yes, we have a motion in a second.
We have a motion. Who made the motion? Alderman Sillsby, and seconded by Alderman Schmidt. To hire these three probationary police officers. If there's no additional questions, I'm gonna call for a roll call vote.
Heisler.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewood.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orland.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Chief.
Your Honor, on behalf of the Finance Committee, I'd like to make a motion to approve the sale of property at 515 South 17th Street. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Sillsby, seconded by Alderman Schmidt. Discussion on this. Yes, ma'am.
Maybe I overlooked it, but I see what we have it listed at and what it's selling for, but what did we purchase this property for?
It's been so long ago, I don't have it in front of me. It was a package deal with the two homes, and it was a lot, there was a lot more to it than just price of the homes. There was, you know, claims of all kinds of things in that whole thing.
But that should, we should be giving this in per-
Okay, but we've had it now, and you could, once again, you could have called, we've had this listed for a long time. We took this property over, Bobby, we've had it for sale for two years?
Since August 7, 2013.
Okay, so, so a year, I'm sorry. We had it sale for a year. We've had to own it. We finished up 17th Street. It's been open for, gonna be two years in October, and it was before that when we bought it, so we've had to own this for three to four years.
But I'm asking, what did we pay for this?
I don't have it in front of me. I don't have what we-
To know the loss that we're taking.
Well, but you understand, the purpose, property was purchased, there was a whole different equation then. I don't know if you remember, Alderman Schneider, I think you were on the council. It was felt at that time, if we didn't get those, those couple properties, if they held us up in legal proceedings, the cost of the road improvements to finish that road, et cetera, would weigh out, much outweigh what the difference in cost was, and that this council made a conscious decision of those things, and I don't think that was really even a close vote. We, we talked about that many times.
And we're selling the part that we didn't need.
Right, exactly.
Okay, so it's not the same piece of property.
And we did sell the-
We used the right-of-way for twenty, uh, for the-
For the, for the Seventeenth Street.
Seventeenth Street.
The parking lane we had to get, and that was all a negotiation, where we first were gonna put 'em in an alley, and then we negotiated to go to the parking lane. There was a lot of adjustments in that whole compromise, listening to the neighbors and trying to work with them. Uh, Bob, we sold the other one, do you remember, for approximately? Yeah, about forty-four thousand?
Around, around.
Right around forty-four thousand, we sold the other one, but it was in much better shape. Always was much better shape. Alderman Hayden?
Yes, your honor, I, I supported this Health and Housing Committee. Had a lot of discussion tonight about, uh, the police department and, uh, why we need to keep these positions filled, and, and it's pretty simple to me, your honor. Had a question raised to me by a constituent of why are we selling this house so cheap when it was praised at this? And, he, he, here's the reality, folks. House in my neighborhood, immaculate condition, outside, inside, immaculate, appraised at a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. They started at a hundred and five thousand. It was on the market for over a year and a half, and they sold it for sixty-five thousand, but they were lucky to sell it. Where other houses sit there with for-sale signs, for-sale signs, and more for-sale signs, and the reason why, ladies and gentlemen, whether you wanna admit it or not, is again, it is the perception and the crime, and crime and perception, and it goes back and forth, it is plaguing this city, the inner city, and, and we sit here and we do nothing to look at ways to add more police officers, and that is what is plaguing and killing this city. So the fact that this home, that the condition, as it's been stated inside and the problems that it had, to be for sale for this, I have to support it. We need to sell it and get rid of it and, uh, try to move ourselves out of the real estate business.
So, we have a motion in a second to approve the sale of this house, and it's in your package, it's for twenty-four thousand nine, is that right, Bob? Twenty-four nine, uh, is the sale price. That's now, there'll be commission, there'll be some closing costs that we're gonna incur as the seller, uh, so everybody understands that. So if there's no further questions, roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.[1665.01]